Good evening and welcome to the Town and New Paul's Planning Board meeting, January 13, 2014. Up on the agenda for the first is a review and approval of the minutes. I have before me the minutes of December 16. I have a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Thank you, Lyle and Peter. Any discussion on the minutes?
Nope.
All those in favor? Next up on the agenda is 15 minutes we open up for public comment on issues other than a public hearing. Is anybody here wishing to make any public comments? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm John Johnson. I don't have a comment as much as I have a question. And that is, in the code, in the New Paul zoning code, I don't see anywhere that dormitories are permitted use. And can you guys clarify where I might find dormitories as a permitted use in the code?
Unfortunately, I have my code book. We'll let George answer that question. Generally, if it's not an excluded item, then it's a permitted item. In other words, if it doesn't explicitly exclude dormitories, because you can't really name everything in the world sometimes, but you know what you don't want. And so, a lot of times, the code is written to exclude uses in certain zones. So, more than likely, the code will read that it will tell you what's excluded from those zones, as opposed to what's permitted in those zones.
So, if it's not listed as an excluded use, it's possibly a permitted use?
Yeah.
So, in the R1 district, I can have a dormitory? In the R2 district, I could have a dormitory? Because I don't see that it's excluded.
Well, no, then you go into what's allowed. In an R1 zone, is single-family housing is a permitted use. You couldn't have a dormitory because it wouldn't be a single-family house. So, it would run counter to that. Whereas, an RV zone is a variable-density zone, that you could have apartment complexes or multifamily housing and things of that sort.
But I don't, once again, it doesn't say that it's not a permitted use in the R1.
It would be a permitted use if it didn't run into other limits, which ours, R1 is basically a single-family house on an acre of land. That's what's permitted. So, you know, the flip side of it is you can't have a single-family house as a dormitory.
Under the cluster plan in the R1 district, wouldn't I be able to build a dormitory and cluster it together, being that the board inquires a cluster plan to be done as part of the application?
Can I just interject? There's a certain amount of mixing of fruit here going on.
I'm sorry.
When you're talking about a cluster plan and the requirement to cluster, that's a requirement of the subdivision regulations. So, it's an apple and an orange. The other point is, I didn't hear the question, so I apologize if I'm not understanding it. Dormitory in the context that's being used by the IDA is not related to the New Paul zoning code. Multifamily attached housing, which is allowed in the RV district, the fact that it's being used, the fact that dormitory is being used is not relevant to the New Paul's code. It's a creature of the IDA regulation statute.
So, any paperwork that you send up to the IDA, it will be listed as a multifamily?
It's a residential housing project. They don't define a dormitory either, as I recall.
Dormitory is defined by students.
That's true. They don't define it well.
My other question is, in previous public hearings, I asked the board if they can do a financial impact statement that includes the impact on existing residential rentals and the housing market in general. And I have not been able to find that either in both consultants' fiscal impact statements. And I was wondering if I was missing that somewhere.
I don't think there's anything explicit on the impact on a competitive market. It would be asking us if a new supermarket would come into town, what would be the impact on the existing grocery stores? And whether, and from a competitive point of view, that's an unknown.
Okay, so you're telling me that's something that you can't take into consideration?
We acknowledge it as an impact on the amount of housing stock, and what it is, and where it is. And that's been addressed.
Where has that been addressed?
The assumption that's driving it, and that we've carried through, is that approximately 90% of the students coming into the Park Point project would be present-day commuters, not people living in and around.
Yes, and that's precisely what I'm asking for. Where are they currently commuting from? Because if they're commuting from one side of our community to the other, to campus now, are they considered commuters?
They wouldn't be considered commuters.
And is that the 90%, 90% of them, you think, commute from afar?
Actually, I think that 90% number was used by the applicant's consultant. And CGR tried to review that to a certain extent. And there's some comment related to their interpretation of how it will affect the college and how many kids are currently in the community, whether they're commuting or living here already. So, it is somewhat of a moving target, but I think CGR did try to comment on that a little bit in their financial report.
I think the college would be able to, since the college is pushing this, the college should be able to provide a list of numbers with the radiuses of these people. Not their specific address, but the radius in which they are currently commuting. And I bring this point up because in some paperwork that I've read, they say that people are going to be commuting from the north side of campus to the south side of campus, i.e. the village, which is going to leave the village with a great deal of vacancies. Now, I know eventually, the college will expand and fill up those vacancies, but until they do, we're going to have an upward of 18% vacancy unless, in fact, the commuters are commuting from outside of town. So, I think the fiscal impact statement that was provided by both the applicant as well as CGR is incomplete at best. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Moving along, the next topic we have is the planning board administrative discussion on traffic and access management. And Gail, would you come on up and sit through and tell us what we're looking at and the work that your committee has done in the past seven years?
Well, two months short of seven years since we first did that. And I have to, you know, for any of the technical specifics, you will find me leaning very heavily on Dave Klausert and George Lithgow, whom I'd like to acknowledge publicly for having been such an enormous help to getting us to this particular point. And, you know, poor Dave has listened to my nagging for at least five of those seven years, trying to get us to this point. I'm not sure how much more I can tell you beyond what was conveyed in the, I hope you all saw the email transmittal of our recommendation for the adoption of this. But I'd have to say that even though the catalyst was a request for the creation of a Main Street bypass road, that the transportation land use study quickly established, and I'd say for the, we had a 30-person Citizens Advisory Committee, and I think that for virtually all of us, it came as a surprise when we began doing the study. We thought we were here to talk about traffic on Main Street and to discover the significance of land use and planning for issues related to traffic and safety and so forth, was one of the earliest revelations. And that carried forward after the Town and Village Boards accepted the recommendations coming out of the transportation land use study in December of 2006, thereby creating the Transportation Implementation Committee, that, as I explained in the transmittal, that at the urging of the then-supervisor, our first action was to recommend the development, and we hope ultimate, adoption of an access management overlay plan. Given how long ago the study was completed, it may be that not every member of the planning board has had an opportunity to review the final recommendations. But as they apply not only to access management, but I really would urge that, as you have the opportunity to do so, to look through the study. The town clerk has a copy, because there are a number of recommendations in there that have bearings on the kind of work that you do. But, you know, with regard to the access management recommendation that we're making, and I will refer to the study itself, that the purposes that we are trying to achieve through this recommended access management overlay district is improved traffic flow, improved vehicular and pedestrian safety, improved driveway and site design, decreased cut-through traffic through residential areas, and even support for economic development by virtue of improved access. So, that is why, lo, these long years, we have kept at it until we have brought to you and to the Town Board the recommendation that we have.
I did have a couple of comments on it, but I wanted to make sure the board had any comments on it. No, no, I marked up one. That's why I was waiting for it. I'm looking, Kelly put the clean copy on my desk. Just as straight, we're really looking at 32208, 299, Puck Corners, south of Shipperton as the key to applying this. And then, anything that's within 400 feet of such a highway, too. The challenge that I've always had with developing access is when someone comes before you with an application on one of these locations, and you want to see the ability to connect to a neighboring piece of property, isn't so much the applicant who's willing to do anything to get his application approved, it's the neighboring property owner that doesn't want anything to come in on that. Have you wrestled with that issue, or what you can do with the neighboring property owner? Because I know I had, I'll tell you, back in '95, '96, when we did the medical center, we had, you know, the medical center was comfortable doing it, and I had absolutely no response from the plaza to do anything, open it up or anything to that. That was my real-life experience in trying to establish it. So, I was just wondering, any ideas or incentives that came out of that kind of discussion, what you can do with the neighbor?
We had the same problem in 2005 with Stop &amp; Shop. At that time, Stop &amp; Shop was supposed to get an easement, but there was another bank opposite the bank on the plaza property that was not really interested in that. There was also, there was an easement with a Stop &amp; Shop property that was proposed, but the hookup to the medical center was not something that happened. There was also an easement that was granted for access through the plaza to the property on the north side of the Chamber of Commerce property for a senior housing project at the time. That never developed, but there was an access that was granted. So, it seems like it's, at least if you can get the easement on the property that's before the board, and then you have to be patient, things will change. It's very difficult to get the two parties to agree when one of them has nothing in the game, I guess.
But eventually, we'll come back.
Exactly. We have to start somewhere. And so, with that applicant, hypothetical applicant, you're making to start with that one. And someday, you know, that may have come to fruition. And just by adopting something like this, I would hope that as applications come before this board, that there is, you know, an increased sensitivity to the issues and values of this that we've developed over time since some of these other projects were discussed.
You talk about shared driveways. Is that kind of in the core that you're looking at, or are you looking at townwide? You know, if we get a two-lot subdivision, is there, you know, incentive to do shared driveways, to minimize road cuts, especially on some of the main roads?
Well, again, we are looking on the main roads, but would certainly encourage that, again, that the concept and principles be expanded. And again, I would refer you to the study itself, where you'll see that the consultant has provided, you know, some interesting examples, both of good and bad. And shared driveways, they happen to find one on Main Street, actually, that seemed to be working, but, you know, as an example. But that, so, you know, again, I don't know if there's anything more you wanted to add on the driveways themselves.
Sometimes it's a real benefit because of site distance, that if you group two together in one spot, it's much better than putting individual drives, just for safety. It's kind of a, take a look at each site and see what really works there.
Yeah. Generally, when we get in the plan, we get the two-lot subdivision, he already has his house in his driveway over here, and he wants to cut off the piece of property over here. And, you know, you're not going to get anything out of that. So, but...
One thing they have here is residential driveway spacing standards table, and single-family residents to state county roads, this 300 feet, but what if lots are only 200 foot of frontage? You know, how do you get your...
That I do have to...
See what the lot, I mean, if it's an R1 lot and has 100 foot of frontage, you'll never get that. But that's something we try to achieve, if possible.
It's a standard.
There are certain cases that you just will never achieve that, you know, if you're being oversized law.
The notion is to use guidelines, not put things in the code that will then have to vary each time something's different. Then you have authority to waiver-modify for essentially good-plus show. So, if you can't do it, you can't.
Yeah, because shared driveways, unless you, you know, if they're just sharing the exit onto the road, and then it seems like it's requiring two lanes, so you're not really saving anything environmentally in terms of having a smaller footprint. You know, the only advantage is the pulling in and out of the traffic. There's no weather.
Right.
Three cars, that's like... I'm not saying it's a small thing, but there are other issues involved. People will have to have snow plowing arrangements, especially if you had a commercial situation and you went to come along with a driveway in front of the property and then exit together, and you have to figure out, okay, who's going to plow that? You could wind up with a longer horizontal, a longer driveway on your own property than you would have if you just went straight out to the street. You know, it depends on the size of the project and, you know, whether they can incur that or not.
What you might want to do is consider the waiver standard that's at the bottom of page nine on page 10. Apply to that kind of circumstance and see if it's flexible enough. Because the concern was, I think there was concern about the planning board perhaps being a little bit too willing to grant waivers, which perhaps it might not be warranted. So, we want to keep it tight enough, but not too tight.
Well, I think one of the advantages of even look at it is to require us to take a look at the access and to plan for connections with neighboring properties and to make something reasonable going forward on it. And I also think site distances on some of this is nicely defined, which is better than we have been doing before. And the use of the kind of a site distance triangle. So, I think it gives us some more bells and whistles to evaluate some of the issues that we deal with when we're talking about road cuts and the driveway. I think, for instance, adopting something like this will allow development on puck corners, which I would think would have a lot of possibilities of connections to get them off puck corners and to connect them behind. I mean, you have a green field there, right? That's what I'm really going at. You could lay out a proposed road for the first applicant and see what makes sense going down the rest of the property for future applicants. So, you do have another system of road access to keep them off puck corners.
That could be a really useful opportunity to be proactive in planning, rather than as you typically are reactive when someone walks in and says, here's what I want to do, this plan just cost me $25,000, if you want to do this plan. Not a reason why. You can provide an incentive by saying, if you locate here, we know this is suitable for secondary access, we know where the wetlands are. You can take a lot of steps that basically allow the applicant to come in, plug into that design. At some point, you can create it.
The other thing, so I understand correctly on it, is that... The applicant can propose zoning incentives to the Town Board to provide the internal road system. So, what you see is, if we were proposing something on an internal road system, that the applicant could propose a zoning, I'll call it incentives, and take it to the Town Board, says, I'll put this road in if you give me X, Y, and Z.
The example we've used is maybe the developer needed greater density than what might be otherwise allowable, that this provision would allow an applicant, a developer, to say, well, I'd be willing to do this, whatever this is that would be, you know, desirable with regard to the road system and to the thinking of some of us to, you know, have the opportunity to offer carrots as well as sticks with some of these things.
Oh, okay.
Would that be a change in the ceiling on the property?
Could be.
Would they be, they wouldn't be sponsoring it?
Not if it's not according to a plan for the overall community. You can zone the spot, but it's got to be for the public.
All right. I think, well, there's two things. Correct me if I'm wrong, because everybody will anyway. One is that it's an amendment to the zoning code. The Town Board will ask our opinion on the amendment, and we send our comments to it. The second one is, I really want you to take a look at, read over the guidelines and see if you're comfortable with adopting the guidelines for the planning board to use going forward on it. Is there some things you want to tweak or not tweak? But read it over carefully, because it's, like a few of the other amendments, the planning board takes on more responsibilities to do things on it. Knowing that we've gone through a number of applications, both commercial and residential, how well does it fit? What do you think you'd be doing differently on some of those projects if you're looking at it? And does it make sense and does it work from a flow point of view? So, two things that we have on the list is, are we comfortable with proposing it to the, well, the town will come back, or we'll have to make a recommendation to Town one way or the other? And a second, is the guidance laid out well that we can use it, or do we have to want to tweak it some way, or put something in, or caveat? Like George said, take a look at the waivers. If you're sitting there looking at it, are they too strong, from a planning board perspective, or are they the other side of the coin? Get to a planning board meeting, and we waive everything anyway. So, I don't want it to become a meaningless fixture, but I think it's always a struggle to get access on properties to adjacent properties. And we see that with our...
Should that be a good cause for a waiver, if there was no, you were building access to nowhere?
Well, I think the flip side is, yeah, if it's going nowhere, but if it has the potential to go somewhere, sometime down the road.
So, you would take an easement, but not expect to put it in at the time?
Yeah, that's what I would...
But then how, then the other guy comes along, he's ready to put his half in, but this guy doesn't have any project going, he doesn't have any incentive to put the part in on his easement. So, then who would pay for that? You know, it's very difficult when properties are developed and one by one.
Which, to some extent, you can attempt to address by additions. You can require that the applicant, before you, take certain actions. You can agree to do that, which doesn't mean when it comes to actually paying for something expensive, that he's going to willingly do that. The other, you could also, in some cases, perhaps seek to get a bond of some sort. But ultimately, the assurance of getting something done is when you get that second applicant in, and if it's economically purposeful of him to do it, you will find a way to do it, hopefully in collaboration with the other guy. But if you're asking somebody to put in 1,000 feet of road to connect up and provide an easement to the next door property... to connect up and provide easement to the next door property, it would be difficult for me to imagine circumstances in which the thousand feet of road will get installed just because the next property wants to build.
Yeah.
Will be a challenge.
Well, we don't, you know, a thousand feet of road on some of these streets are, especially on 299 would be a major accomplishment. There we were talking about shorter disconnections, I mean...
Well, for example, on Stop and Shop, you have that parcel that goes up to the Chamber. The one to the west, there is an easement there. There's also a fairly significant slope as I recall. So if someone is going to build a connection through there, it needs to be economically viable for them to make that improvement. But the legal capacity to do that doesn't exist. So they don't have to fight that fight as well. Still has to make sense.
Yeah.
Well, if the town would ever, if they would put in spur road with no other tenant on the road, that would provide an incentive for the next guy to come along because he's got a road to tie into to be off the main street. So if you have some kind of a driveway that's parallel to a state or county or whatever road, initially only one person is using it, one business. But it's there, it's already put in, so the guy on the next property has incentive to tie in. The curb cut, whatever is required to get out on the highway is already there. He's only got to put his driveway in. So then you wind up with a spur that has a business or some development either way off of the main traffic, you know. But I can't see people putting it in on their own.
Without anything...
You got some idea of a payback at some point.
That's why we always have the paper streets. They ended up being big driveways and grassy areas. But I think, I think what we're trying to capture here is, and the guidance talked to it, is to look and see. And to, as George said, be more proactive, can we do it? Where can we do it? And does it make sense? What of anything? The ability to connect from Burger King down to the bank would be a nice alternative to what we have now. And, you know, if there's an application that comes before us, I think there's possibilities of doing something like that if you take a look at it. I think this forces us to take that look. But clearly, this is on pudge corners and basically on pudge corners, it's an ability for us to develop a secondary road system for adjoining properties rather than them all coming down with curb cuts onto pudge corners.
Sure, the east side of North Pudge Corner.
Yeah. Not to the extent that anything develops on the west side, maybe that could be too. I mean, but yeah, basically I'm looking at these things.
So we would, when applicants would know maybe that would be one of their, apply for a waiver automatically if they had no intention of doing that?
No, I think we could...
Be like street trees and curbs and...
You know, yeah, no, that's what I want to do. You know, the first applicant comes in, we're going to say, you know, we want to connect with this adjoining property. We believe that a road cut for adjoining properties could be built along this part of the property, all the way down from one end of, from DC, you know, or right through down to 32. Or we'll return in. And we'd have an overlay district with a proposed secondary road. And as you came in and developed property or wanted property on it, you had to see where you tied into that secondary road. And then you had to pay for your share where that secondary road approached your property. But for that, you may get, propose a higher density or propose something for the town board to consider.
And to the extent the town is willing to undertake some proactive planning, if it determines that certain levels of development with that road will be suitably served by traffic, there may be circumstances in which you do not need to require a traffic impact statement, which is time and expense to the applicant. And that in and of itself may be an incentive to participate in accomplishing that plan.
You know, what I'm struggling with here is that we're talking about proactive planning. And it seems to me like all we're doing is just encouraging people to drive from Burger King to Ulster Savings Bank, you know, in that example. They're just like really short distances. So if we're thinking of like better ways to plan for our community, why don't we think of ways to encourage like a more pleasant walk from Burger King to Ulster Savings Bank instead of putting in the likes of access roads?
Well, in terms of the site plan modification that is proposed, it includes opportunities provided for the safe and efficient access and flow of vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle traffic.
I understand that, but we've not talked about anything except roads for people to drive a few hundred feet.
Most people drive, but that allows the opportunity...
But most people drive in communities when they're provided with no other options.
Yes, and that's...
When you have good options in terms of being able to walk, people walk.
And that was a request from the committee that that be inserted.
That's right.
I believe it's the committee's interest.
Absolutely.
Certainly, the planning board has raised those issues in some cases. And now we'll be invited to do it more often.
But again, we shouldn't, I agree with you. We've talked about cars and that, but we should...
No one drives, no one drives 400 feet in New York City. Everyone walks, you know, because they have... Because they have good walking experiences.
If you look through the guidelines and you see opportunities to put in additional provisions that will help accomplish that goal, you know, let me know and I'll make sure they can be put in a draft form. You know, I don't see anyone objecting to that.
No, I don't think so either. I think we should, we should be careful about how we kind of frame this concept and just not lock ourselves into one way of getting from point A to point B.
Added or emphasized, you can certainly put it. I think the rest of the board would be agreeable.
Well, you know, to that extent too. I mean, if we had a connection between the bank and Burger King as a pedestrian or a bicycle path, it would make a lot of sense.
Well, that's the thing, is like I'm very familiar with the area from Burger King to the bank. And that's an awful...
Yes.
You know, section of sidewalk and cut-throughs and, you know, so we've just created something which is truly unpleasant for even people who want to walk. So anyone who's feeling hesitant is definitely not going to do it. I would just like us to think a little bit differently when it comes to this stuff.
Well, maybe we should, yeah, I think upfront maybe we'll put more emphasis on the three different ways, walkable, bicycle, or car. Carried that through in all the sections that we're talking about because it may be difficult to get a right of way through for a secondary road, but it may be practical to put in a walkway or a bicycle path, like into Stop and Shop from another location off-site rather than coming out to Main Street. If that housing project ever developed there. I mean, those are the types of things, wouldn't be a necessary road at all. It would be a pedestrian path.
Well, for example, in Rhinebeck, behind the bookstore, back behind the department store, going back to there, there's pedestrian path going through there. The lone holdout is probably the bookstore and the, that has the wrought iron fence in between that keeps you from actually making it all the way through. So then you have to walk down the bank driveway to go around that wrought iron fence to go into the next little plaza, which is a horrible thing.
Yeah.
But the rest of the pathway is good for hundreds and hundreds of feet, you know, to keep people, give people access.
No, let's take, go ahead.
Okay, I'm not opposed to what you're suggesting. I think it's a good idea. But psychologically, the mindset of most people in Loopus right now is to drive. I mean, I notice, for example, if somebody is at the health food store in the Stop and Shop Plaza, and then they want to go to Stop and Shop, they get into their car, drive another 10 feet and park again. There's plenty of walking.
Well, that, yeah, that's kind of an extreme example, but, you know, there will always be people who may prefer to drive. But I think if we improve the pedestrian experience, because we have a lot of really awful pedestrian experiences in New Paltz and the sidewalks are entirely too narrow or in terrible disrepair. And there are no curb cuts and there are only curbs. And, you know, there are businesses that don't plow and you have enormous snow banks to climb over if you even want to venture along the sidewalks. So I think we have a...
I think we should, see if it helps.
Are you aware of any site planning guidelines or guidelines that go into those aspects of site planning?
Not at all.
It would be helpful if we could attach something, but I think your points were...
Yeah, I think if there's any, that's a good point. We should...
I think we have a lot, we have a lot of people in our community who probably would want to walk more if it wasn't so difficult to walk 500 feet.
And we do have a large contingent of walkers between the college and the stores themselves uptown. And if we had the ability to make a safe pedestrian pathway through that, piece by piece, I mean, I was on the board when we, piece by piece, got the sidewalks built on the south side of Main Street. So I know what it's like to even get a sidewalk there. But I think we should start looking at applications and then not so much on... I think pudge corners is a secondary road, but I think Main Street is pedestrian and bicycle safety. How do we make that work and stay off Main Street? And where we can go with that.
That'd be wonderful news to our committee. And again, just historically, it was due to the priorities attached by the Citizens Advisory Committee that the questionnaire that went out at the beginning of the study solicited responses to issues having to do with walking and bicycle riding and so forth. And within the first year of our existence, that we had spun off what was initially a subcommittee, the Bike Pet Committee, which is now a joint, you know, a joint committee and that regularly at our meetings and certainly, you know, certainly at theirs, we worked jointly on a number of these issues and that, you know, have regretted that among the recommendations that, and we knew going into this with so many recommendations, it'd take a lot of years to do a lot of things. But, you know, one of the first things that we had hoped we were going to go somewhere was a sidewalk fund in the village where there are more sidewalks than there are in the town. But we haven't to spare. But to, you know, if your conversations of this particular proposal, you know, result in, you know, a further emphasis on issues like that, we'd be absolutely delighted.
So I think what we're coming back to is that I think this is good to evaluate, but the board should be evaluating, evaluating it not only on vehicular traffic, but it should be evaluated where we can make a better walkable pedestrian bicycle community. And with places are extremely close together and you don't think roads are going to work at all or don't make any sense, definitely anywhere, anywhere on Main Street, I think I can say safely, if we can improve any of the ways to walk here. Because I, truthfully, I won't just ride down Main Street on a bicycle. I'll do the backroads, but I won't to Main Street. So I think from that standpoint, we should look at, to me, two things. If I get a pedestrian path between the college and the stores and a bicycle path to do that, I think that's what we should be working on in any application that comes before us to affect that. There may be an overlay district to do that. But we should take a look at what a bicycle path, walking path would look like and what properties are associated with it. And, you know, what's in the village, what's in the town. But what we can do to get that at least started, at least an overlay district. We'll look, see. Roads are more expensive and harder to build, but bicycleways or walkways are, you know, five feet, 10 feet wide paths, so...
And I just truly believe that the more you accommodate cars and you make it easier for them to use access roads, then you're just going to have more cars on Main Street. You're not going to have fewer. And I truly believe that. I think the reason that people like New Paltz and are attracted to New Paltz is because we have a walkable Main Street. And if we create a Main Street or, you know, North Pudge Corners or roads that feel more like anywhere else in the US where we have, you know, these malls with access roads and all you're doing is just inviting more traffic and more cars. And I just don't, I don't feel that that's a remedy to deal with our congestion problem.
Well, I don't have to say that, you know, based on the kind of, you know, expert advice and so forth that we've gotten is that that experience has demonstrated that this kind of, this kind of approach does not result in the kind of thing that you're suggesting, you know, may be in the law. But I would remind you that the purposes of this are not exclusively to look at traffic congestion. They also have very much to do with safety issues for pedestrians and bicyclists as not just, you know, moving cars along and dealing. And again, one of the first principles that were adopted in approaching to the, the approach to the study and the subsequent recommendations is that the answer, that traffic issues aren't just a matter of moving cars along. They also involve getting people out of their cars and making it possible for them to do so. And one of the reasons why we were so proud that one of the earliest accomplishments was the establishment of the Loopus. So that, and that remains a priority, as I say, of getting, you know, getting more people out of their cars, walking more, using bicycles, but also recognizing that, you know, indeed, that there are still a lot of people who are going to move their cars those 400 feet from one shop to another shop.
Mike Lynn just reminded me too, that there are plans to connect the two rail trails, the Highland Rail Trail and the Walk Hill.
Well, I know that, yeah.
And that might integrate with this too.
But basically, the connection is Henry W. to Boys.
Right.
To Putt. And then that, so it really bypasses Main Street. And I'm, Tim, we're looking at commercial development along 299. To the extent we're looking at a site plan, how do we improve the pedestrian walkability of that site plan? And I think that's one of the keys that we should be looking at with this.
But you were talking about North Putt as a vehicular path to connect with...
No, this was the bike path connecting Highland to the rail trail, the path they laid out.
The bike path will go down, Henry W., is that what you're referring to?
That's what the path is, right Lynn? Down Henry W., the Boys to North Putt.
Well, the plan calls for that. But I think a lot of people actually doing it would prefer to go down Main Street because they might want to stop for a sandwich or, you know, just see Main Street. And having ridden my bike up and down Main Street, it's not really pleasant. I don't ride on the sidewalk, so usually I'll hop off my bike and walk it down the sidewalk. And then I can't find a bike rack if I do want to go have a sandwich. So, you know, there are issues, but I think a lot of the people who will try to go between the two rail trails would not choose to take Henry DuBois, even though it's marked out on the map. And particularly pedestrians, and there are pedestrians on rail trails.
Yes, true.
If there's any issue, if there's anything about that, the overlay, that can actually be beneficial to travelers on foot and by trying to go through town to get from one rail trail to another, that would be a good feature.
Yeah, I agree. But I think, all I would say to that is when we review site plans of any... But I think, all I was saying to that is when we review site plans of anything along Main Street, that we look at the width of the sidewalks, the curb cuts are associated with the sidewalks.
As part of the site plans on a regular basis.
And we have not been doing that. So if that triggers us to do it, then we should be doing it.
We do have such an issue coming up very shortly of the rail trail connection and the North Putt.
Yep.
299, right turn lane, 45 mile an hour speed limit, yield sign. I mean, it's a very, it's going to take a lot of design to make that work. Otherwise, we're going to block out the rail trail from being able to connect.
Yep, we shouldn't, yeah, I agree. But we, I mean, any, any, any site plan along 299, I know which one you're talking about. That one's going to take a little work. For any, any site plan that we have, a change in facade on a building or something else like that, we should be looking at the pedestrian access.
On either side of the throughway, too. I mean, the other side, when it develops, we need to really think about pedestrian access across the throughway on the east side.
Okay. So let's bring it over. Let's, we get, if we're not emphasizing the right things in the right spots, let's try to put that in. I know we captured it down at the end on the, on F, and probably be comfortable, but, you know, we talked about on F, on the section one, is the traffic circulation within and without the site. And I think we would probably want to say the flow of vehicular pedestrian and bicycle traffic within and without the site. That's the opening one, so we picked that up on that. But let's take a look at it and, at least from our point of view, and go from there.
Excellent. Any sense of timetable?
Um, well, we probably can, I'm not going to...
Can you see around the brush there? What's the rush?
Gail's waiting to get paid.
No, we, we'll keep it on the agenda for the next couple of meetings to see if we can wrap it up and to keep it focused on it so we can move along rather than come back to it a month later. So we'll put it back on the board agenda for follow-up discussion next meeting, Kelly. And we'll keep it up there till we can close it out.
Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Gail. I appreciate it. Appreciate the work.
Just Mike said committee work. The bill of change, Tim?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, the only reminder I have is your financial disclosure forms. Yeah, haven't filled them out? Fill them out. Okay. Changing another guard here. Try to slide over one. Really, he's sitting on that chair.
Do I have this chair?
It's my chair.
It's more comfortable. I didn't realize that Sli was struggling with the chair. We had one sitting there. Okay.
Good evening.
Hey.
How are you?
Copy's back, I went to...
Peter, how are you?
How's your trip?
Nothing bad. Some days it feels easier than others, huh? Some days you're exhausted just driving for hours, but...
Sure we're able to clean?
Yeah, yeah. Missing dry and sort of warm out.
Okay. What have you here?
First install.
Okay.
Sometime around last week, I realized I'm trying to put 366 pages from the DIS, 300 pages from the FEIS, and somewhere around 200 pages of commentary from the public into adoption, and it's going to be about 40 pages long. And it's outlined, but it is not something that I believe at this point is entirely presentable. But what I thought would be helpful is to take out two of the sections that are more or less complete except for some substantive references, which Dave and I may be able to help with. And illustrate what I think is a relatively straightforward but somewhat complex section, the soil section, and what is a rather straightforward and simple section, geology. So basically, what the planning statement will do is track each of the topics that is in the scoping outline in the DIS and in the FEIS. It will lay out the facts of each section, who will lay out the potential impacts that were identified in mitigation, if any, that was identified in the environmental impact record. And your job as planning board is to review the findings, the impacts, the findings, and determine whether additional mitigation may be required for whether each of those sections sets out to require mitigation, but should be imposed by the planning statement, or which has been offered by the applicant or resident. And basically, what will then happen is the findings will be for the next meeting prepared completely, with the factual references in the DIS and FEIS that support the particular facts and any mitigation that's identified, because that's part of the requirement that it just takes a lot of time to do. So if you'd like, we could just go through the details of these two sections, should take that off, and give you the flavor of how the process should proceed.
Is this something you're asked about?
You have, I think, do you have a couple of extra copies?
I had, yeah, but I thought you were... That's all right.
We can, we can run them right, on the... I can't. I can't. I'll screw it up.
Break his other thing, right?
Not yet. Because I haven't ready yet.
George, just as a question, you're thinking the next meeting you'll have a complete draft by the next planning board?
I hope, obviously, I'd hope to do it, have it done by tonight, but it was not a realistic expectation. Basically, what the DIS and to some extent, the revised plans that were incorporated with the FEIS do is describe soil conditions, include geotechnical reports, and they respond, to as best I can determine, to the requirements of the scoping update, and lay out how the soils on the site need to be modified as necessary to address the soil contamination issues that were identified in the course of the DIS and the FEIS. There are various substances which are present on the site which relate to the prior agricultural use. The DIS and the FEIS discuss, propose methods for remediating that. There has been discussion at the planning board and, I believe, in the public comments regarding bio remediation. They want to take a look at that section that's on page, in the middle of page one down, because it compares and contrasts two different alternatives for remediation. The encapsulation method that's proposed by the...
Where's the bio remediation section? I just...
There's a reference.
Or a paragraph.
Next time around, I'll do the line numbers.
Yeah.
Where it says proposed conditions, too, on the first page. Third paragraph down.
Okay.
It begins talking about.
Well, okay.
Is that related to stuff Eileen's brought up?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it was also, I believe, brought up by individuals during the public hearing process, so I thought it was important to note. It had been identified as an alternative, but this is where I think Dave and I will elaborate a little bit more of this week. My understanding is that's not a realistic alternative for this particular project, given the timeframe of remediation to work. And it also creates a byproduct, the vegetation which has to be disposed of. I think this is a separate issue in and of itself.
But Doug, do you have any take on it?
What we did do, and it was based on some stuff that sent to us by Dave, I made sure what the...
Was Eileen's information?
How his initial source was. Eileen Peters, thank you. There was some additional information about the usefulness of compost and with regard to its ability to decompose and this stuff. So we have, in the latest information we sent you, had it in, that we would mix the compost in with the topsoil so that these things could kind of, kind of happen somewhat simultaneously. I don't know how deep down it would do any remediation or anything in that regard, but it may have some beneficial, beneficial impact on the upper part. So in other words, you put the, you put the stuff down and you put the fence over it and you put a mixture of compost and topsoil over that. And the compost, according to information that was sent, which quite frankly, I was not up by, does have some ability to break down some of the compost. So that was kind of, I think, almost the middle ground, and you really don't have time to go out there and plant special plants that would clean up, so to speak, and then have, like George said, the condition where you got the plants that are used to clean it up, what are you going to do with those, and all that type of thing. So this seemed to be like a reasonable approach and compromise for everybody's, I guess. So in that latest batch of stuff I sent out, we did state that we would be willing to do that.
No, I'm assuming I'm still right. The main problem with the total remediation would be the delay in time that it would cause.
It would take several seasons. I don't know if there's really plant materials that are applicable to this climate that would do that good a job either. You know, some of the stuff I saw was more tropical type of situations. So there's that problem.
So identifying the material that's suitable for this climate is one problem.
Plant materials.
The plant materials, and the other would be...
Time, just time.
I think the ones that I read, the studies, would be about 90 days. I'm just working from memory right now.
I don't recall reading anything like that. I thought it would be seasons.
Well, 90 days could be a season.
I mean, you know, years.
Well, would...
Several seasons.
Would 90 days be an acceptable timeframe for you if that were, if you found a material that would do it in 90 days?
I think you have to, you have to look, too, at how, go ahead.
What I understand also is that then you got to somehow dispose of the plants, because now, it's not like that stuff evaporates and just magically becomes clean. It's just, it's transferring it somewhere else. So now, it seemed like you were moving it out of the dirt into a plant, but now you still have to dispose of the plant.
Only that, you have no way of knowing if it's going to remove all the contaminants, all of the contaminants. If it doesn't remove all the contaminants, I would suggest that the method for remediation that's suggested here is much more certain.
So the timing and the removal is...
Yes, and the compost apparently helped break down the compost as opposed to off the plants. I think there's a benefit to that. You don't have the plants stealing it either.
If you can't do it on this project, would you be willing to perhaps facilitate some sort of test that would help? Because this is not the only orchard in the town, not the only orchard in the city that has a fisher. Some opportunities for testing to see how this would work and helping us understand how to remediate, perhaps on the beneficial mitigation that may be accomplished.
I guess if there was some area that we weren't touching that someone wanted to come in and work on some of these plants on the land and do sort of a science project on it, then, you know, we could probably work something out there. But as far as a testing and a science project goes, I don't think it's really up our alley or qualified to run a science project.
Maybe something the town would want to pursue, if this is...
Maybe something could be pursued through the college.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that seems really interesting, but not necessarily relevant to your problem. But if you could somehow figure out a way to use compost and if that would help remediate the soils, so what's your, what's your take on the, how long that would take to work?
We don't necessarily know how...
We don't, none of us know the science behind how long it would take to work, but in terms of if we were to experiment with it and to mix in the compost to try to...
The nice thing about the compost, you can mix it in, and then it's supposed to work over time.
That's right.
But we're done. So we did it, we set it there, and everyone knows that we did it, we walked away from it. Anything that compost does over that time is just a positive effect. But even if it didn't do anything, we've already buried it, we've taken care of it to the state standards, DEC standards and all of that.
And that is the recognized treatment, that is the recognized treatment statewide and then region three, you know, region three. The bio remediation is not a recognized treatment.
Well, that just needs to stay something backwards.
Does it make some stuff?
But if there's no trace of the toxins found after the remediation's been done, then there's no real problem.
I don't think you're going to find that. I mean, just, you know, there's so much soil and you only get a certain amount of compost and to encapsulate it, you know, cover it. And then we did, in some of the latest stuff we sent, put out some real specific information on monitoring to make sure...
Right, that's where I was, I just wrote down monitoring.
So to make sure it didn't become uncovered if you...
Right.
So with the latest...
It's an ongoing monitoring.
The latest things we put out, we did try to bolster that. You folks can look at it and see if that makes sense. Maybe George has the seeds for that.
I read the section in here which does require monitoring.
Basically, we say the town engineer may require post remediation sampling laboratory analysis. Even necessary judgment to confirm soil remediation has been affected. Soils where human contact may take place and exceed any contaminant level never require remediation, require remediation requirements. But we are continuing to monitor.
That's the most important.
Yeah, I wish Eileen were here. She was the one that is really up on the composting and to do some workshops on it.
I appreciate the input.
Well, my sense is that the practical, certain method is encapsulation. And that monitoring, composting might be experimented with, but it's not going to...
Well, there's cred, there's credence to use it, so it would be a bonus.
But you're going to...
We're going to... The standards required or exceed them with those standards. We're willing to, like your suggestion, complement that with some composting, which it's just one step further, but we've met it without the compost. But we'll do that.
I was going to say, I'm going to answer it regardless of...
Yeah, need to monitor. Yeah, need to monitor it.
Right.
And do it. Another important element of the soil section is to make sure it's integrated with the drainage and stormwater design, opposed to putting per DCA. There should be, there should be a comprehensive plan, should be done as part of phase one. I've got a longer section I was working on last night, those were phasing, but during phase one, section one, most of the, all of the site grading, all of the soil remediation, all of the stormwater improvements will be put into place.
That's great.
In the second phase, essentially, building and the-
The few buildings that are left.
So all of this will be accomplished as part of the first phase, and it'll all be, basically settling in. And that has the advantage that before occupancy takes place, the soil remediation is done, the erosion controls are in place, and in all likelihood, they'll be finished, and there will be minimal exposure on the part of occupants to blowing dust or dirt, things of that nature. So all these parts will come together to make sure the remediation is accomplished in a very quick and efficient manner. The bio remediation opportunities, if they were done as the preferred method, you would have that extending over a period of time, and it would probably include occupancy. Seems like it would be good to do before you plan a project to implement that kind of remediation, but it doesn't seem like this is a point which it should be accomplished. And that's part of my concern, is I want to make sure these come out to you in a way that you can identify these choice points, and that the board can determine to issues or concerns about either mitigation that is there or is not there, that should be there. So I will put line numbers in so we can identify-
Appreciate it.
... civic sentence. Interesting.
Where's it, where's the number one supposed to be in the first, like below A? On the first page?
It should be a number one, it should be at the top of that.
So just the DEIS described, right? Is that it? Okay. But then there's no title for that section?
Existing conditions.
Okay.
If you look at the last page, you see the geology section.
That's the format.
Much shorter.
Yeah, yeah. That's the format, okay.
So that's the basic structure of how the findings be organized. There will be a long prologue, which provides all the detail about the project itself, the overall characteristics, the secret steps that have been taken, the date, the public process that's been engaged in by the planning board, and there will be a short conclusion, which will be a determination by the board with respect to whether or not the environmental impacts of the project, considering in light of social and economic benefits, are adequately addressed by the planning board.
So it's really necessary for us to be able to read this thing and come to a meeting. Anyway, it's important for us to have it marked up as best we can on the sections that we can. So to the extent that we can roll it out, and to the extent that there's a section in say soils that refers to another section on stormwater, okay, you know, we can note that until we read the stormwater section. I mean, I don't have any problems with that, but it's important that, you know, we get to sit and line through each one of them on a line-by-line basis and then read it. So my idea is that when you get a couple of sections together, you send them out, and we go through them before a meeting.
Yes. I will definitely separate them by section, as the soils and the geology section, so each page will start with a section, and you will have this basic format there. The two things that would be most benefit, three things that would be beneficial. One is making sure all the impacts that are a concern to individual members have been tracked through to the finding statement. Two is to make sure that the mitigation measures that are in the IS and any other measures that may have been identified in the course of review or brought up by the public during the FEIS public hearing, that those are tracked through in each section. And to the extent you feel that there are comments that were raised that should be specifically referenced, comments raised during the FEIS public hearing, that should be specifically referenced and responded to. If there's new issues of concern, it would help me identify those, that would be helpful as well. And then I can incorporate them in here and put them out to you instead of working through it at a meeting.
Okay. But generally, that's, you know, I just wanted to just give you an idea of what a finding statement will look like. We'll address each of the areas, fiscal impact and archeology to water issue, water and sewer conditions. So each of the, they'll all be addressed individually, they'll be linked together where they have to be, but they'll look at existing conditions, proposed conditions to it, anticipated impacts, and proposed mitigation associated with it. So you get the whole story and the pages there. But if there, George said, if the issues you have are things that you wanted to see or track through it, when you get to the sections to look for them, bring them up. It's not all inclusive here, and what one guy is thinking about maybe go and bypass everybody else, because they weren't on to that. And so it hooves each of the individual board members to take a hard look at all the sections and the issues that they've had through this whole process, and make sure it's being addressed. And as George said, and if there were things in the final environmental impact saving public hearings that were brought up that you just think are relative to it, to a section, and it's not in there, or you felt it wasn't answered, or is an open question and we haven't answered it, let's bring that up, too, so we don't miss out on anything there. Some sections will be short, but others will be fairly lengthy.
Yes.
So I, and how it's written is important, too, so. I'd expect by next Monday, we'll have some more sections out, so they give the board a week to-
I make no promises after the last week, but I'm going to try to finish as much as I can.
Yeah, and again, we've got to go through them all, so it doesn't matter when we get them all, but, you know, we'll have to read each one, and like I said, it's going to be a 40 to 50-page document, and it's going to be encapsulated of everything that we've done for the last three or four or five years, whatever it seems like, we've been here four years.
When he sends those to you guys, are we able to get them at the same time?
I've talked ahead before, I'm going to make a determination on that. You know what the problem is? It's everything that comes out in a draft form, you know, without the board really sitting down, it's not a board document yet until the board really sits on it. So I'm hesitant to float out things without the board having discussions on it, because it's not really a board document. It's one person's write-up. So let me think where we are on that and see what we can do on it.
What may be helpful is if there are specific issues in a section that relate to something the applicant may have input on, we could take that out and say, "Do you agree that this can be done as a mitigation measure?" or whatever. And try to get, provide that to, you know, take some issues-
Yeah, I would want to, yeah, again, if it's telling you that you're going to do something, or you agreed to do something, I would be interested that you did agree to it.
Is that the main reason why you asked? So because you know what you can do easily, and you know what's more difficult?
Yeah, just, you know, so that we sort of understand and sort of work through this together.
Well, if they, yeah. Suppose putting a split rail fence somewhere, that we know that we have a split rail fence in that, yeah, you did agree to that, yeah, we put it in there. So, you know, something like that. Factual stuff that we're on the same page. Those that's writing up a finding statement and say the applicant agreed to da, 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 and the applicant goes, "I never saw that before in my life." Or not terminology or that method of, so I think that's where we're going to go on it. But if you do have questions of when George sends it out, that you, you know, don't wait for a meeting. If you want to contact George, contact him, or, you know, if we can speed up the dialogue, if it's, you know, if it's something specific. But if it's something that you want the board to have a discussion on, save it for the board meeting.
So at the board meeting, are we going to actually go over this kind of line by line?
Yeah.
And achieve a consensus?
That's, yeah, that's the intent on it. You got, you know, we've got to vote on it as a finding statement as a board, so the thing of it is to read through of it. There may be some issues that I just can't, you know, agree with that at this point. And then, okay, we'll move on to the next one. But you end up voting on the entire document, and you have to weigh the pluses and minuses on it. So it's not that we're going to get all seven members to completely agree on a section. We may be on the geology section, but that one might work. But there's no requiring for us to agree on everything in there, but if we have a majority of moving on, we'll move on to the next section. And there'll be some people that just won't be comfortable with what's been said there, and will have an issue with it, and we'll go on to the next one. But eventually, you have to evaluate all the sections and come up with your conclusion on it, and then we'll see where we go from there. So, no, it's not that, okay, we've done soils, we read it through, everybody's in full agreement on it, and we go on to the next section on it.
But these things have footers identifying the draft date, so that if we do correct the draft, we don't get mixed up with the new draft and the old draft.
But you have an opportunity to put it into that document, but it won't be in the finding statement once you see the whole thing.
Yeah, because I've had the experience of working with something that's been obsolete, and I, you know, oh heck.
You hate to do revisions or look or read a document that's been revised like two or three times, and has multiple colors on the screen, and you're not sure where the sentence starts and where it ends, because it has these line-outs and insertions all the way down. Yeah, I agree. We're going to do revision, date and time on the bottom of the page, and if it changes, the change in the date and time on the bottom of the page will change also.
Super.
Yeah, I might suggest to the chair, Dave, help you with the technical sections and help you speed along with drainage. I had to be pushy, but, you know, it's probably easier for him to do some of those pieces just to-
With me? If Dave said so, it must be true.
Well, I just, you know, you know, for example, the drainage section, his expertise would probably help him write that as opposed to, George, it's not that George can, I'm just-
Oh, no, I can't.
Water does flow down.
Don't try to mean I, it's all right.
I'm trying to say, Doug.
I know. Don't be practical about it, right? Okay, let's do that. We've got the person that knows the least about it, to write the most technical detail on it, it's always the way to go on. So that's where we are on the finding statement. It's a bit more work, but I wanted the board to at least get a feel of what a finding statement would look like. So if you look at it, seek a determination, each of those sections are land, air, noise, archeological, paleontological, all of them are on the list, whatever that one was, yeah. So we'll be going through each of the sections. Community impact will be the big one, too, but we'll go through each of those sections and see if we got it written where we are and what we have. And that's the process. Nobody reads the finding statement and does it in one meeting, so don't feel that you're going to accomplish it in one meeting, not something like this. Okay. Are there any else? Dave, George?
Got a download of the response on the site plan issues. I don't know if the rest of the board got that, so.
We've got to send that out, they haven't gotten that yet.
Okay.
I wanted to read over their responses to the environmental board and county before they send it out. I'll write up, I want to tweak it, not change it, but basically tweak it, at least the environmental board and the county response.
There's some whole new set of plans that are, is in that download, too?
Yeah, we tried to, we tried to take all the comments that had been accumulated, that, you know, Dave was nice enough to put in the forum, and got all the plan changes. In addition to that, verbal responses done, so that you have written responses.
What I asked the, between Dave and the board was, Dave and the applicant was, that I wanted to write written responses back to the county planning board on their comments on the site plan. I wanted to write written comments back to the environmental board on their comments, so we respond to their questions that they raised and how we were meeting it. And so they put that together, it's 90% there, I just want to put my own touch on it, but we'll get that, we'll get that out to the board members tomorrow for it. And then Dave's-
So that's the county planning board and the town ENCB?
Yep. I wanted, you know, we get comments directly from them, I wanted written responses back to them from the board.
Dave also gleaned out from all the environmental discussions what he thought were issues that you wanted to have expanded on more, so that's one of them. And then the other one is just Dave's site plan comments, technical comments. So there's four pieces.
So if we have comments or responses to the county planning board and the ENCB, this is just a draft we haven't sent as a response?
We haven't sent anything yet. I'm going to tweak it, and then I'll send it to you, and we'll finalize it at the next meeting. There aren't, I mean, they're only, you know, four or five pages long, but I just wanted to get the, I want to get into the habit of making written responses back to the interested parties, like the environmental commission and the county, on when they raise an issue that we acknowledge it and we respond to it, what we're going to do about it. So it's just a habit I want to get into. But I'll tweak those, and I'll send those out to everybody this week, and you can take them over if you want. Tweak them, change them again, we can do it at the next meeting, and then I'll send them out.
Did I hear you say that you've made a revised site plan map? Uh-huh. Does that affect all of the mitigations and things that we're looking at?
Should I suggest it might be helpful to explain the revisions, because my sense is most of them are just-
Yeah.
-clarifying what it is.
Yeah, I think, you know, Dave's comments were, like I said, there's four documents. One document was Dave gleaned from all the discussions, what he thought needed a little more answering from an environmental point of view. So he called those FEIS comments. So that document, we expanded on some stuff, and like the soil thing we were talking about before, the compost came up, so we incorporated that. As we did that, we have to add notes to the plans and details to the plan that are relative to that. And then Dave had, you know, strict- know, strict, well, for example, on the county comments, they suggested doing a split rail fence around the pond. So we show on the site plan the split rail fence so that you guys can look at that, say, yeah, we agree with it or we don't agree with it. That we had our other meetings seem like something we wanted to do. So the verbal responses are tied into the plans because, you know, what side of the plans is, what will be constructed? So you wanna make sure.
You're keeping the site plan up to date on the comments that you're adding or mailing.
So we follow as prudent to do a kind of a full resubmission of the plans that addressed all those in our effort to keep everybody up to date and make sure that we're getting responses back to you as quickly as possible and give you enough time to review them.
So this is something that will be sent out to the planning board members also? And we'll put that as the most up-to-date version on our computers and everything?
There's quite a few downloads there and some of them you really don't wanna download.
They're that big?
The SWF is about 50 some meg.
Yeah, you don't.
Well, I'm not gonna be looking too hard at this one. I trust you.
Now, the first couple of written responses on it, and then there's some diagrams that you can go to to see their, like, we talked about the open space and wetland and we cited one of them.
Green areas. Parking calculation or green areas, parking calculations. There's quite a bit there. There's 29 new sheets for the site plans. It's on there. But it's like the first half and then one.
Yeah, I would suggest you read, you know, you read first and that'll...
And then go to see which diagram you wanna see.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing we tried to do is be, in the responses, say, the split rail fence is shown on these sheets. So if you wanted to see that, then you would know where to go to. You'd go up above, okay, there's that sheet. You could click on it, open it up. So that you don't have to, you know, it's not all one big document that you have to try and sort through. So if you read, if you read the responses first, I think that'll, and something piques your interest, then you can go to the graphic illustration or whatever that was.
So for example, these 29 pages where there's green spaces shown, that's not a change in the site plan. That's just a calculation showing the green space.
We did, you'll read in the responses, we did come up short in one area, so we had to add a green island in there.
Okay.
So in every regard, in every regard, yes.
Right. But the overall site plan that you sort of put up here once in a while that shows the buildings and sort of the larger cartoon is identical. It's just all the small details.
The details are being fleshed out.
We did want, Dave did, not have anything to do with it.
I'm not quite sure. You're saying that the detail, the references to the detail, it's a hyperlink to your website or is it embedded in?
There's one, there's a posting, there's a posting that has all the documents listed on the site. So if you read the four top ones, which is the response to comments, and you read in there that it's referencing drawing number 226018, if you want to, you can go down and just open that drawing, for example. And like Dave says, there's no reason for you to open up a SWF report. It's technical stuff that Dave's...
So you wanna check the download speed? Did you check the download speed? Yeah, that's... How many days? Well, we'll get that out to you. Take a look at it. Like I said, I got it last week. I wanted to tweak the responses because that's what, I'll be sending it out from the planning board rather than the applicant to the NCB and to the county. And so I'll, you'll see theirs. I'm gonna tweak it and then we can discuss them at the next planning board meeting and with the intent of mailing them out. If you have any questions on those, let me know. Okay. Is there anything else?
We're checking the revisions against the comments on the plans, kind of looking at the plans. But it's really good that you indexed the comments to the plans. That's very helpful.
Okay. Do you wanna, we wanna go into executive session to discuss some legal matters for the planning board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
We will adjourn right after we finish our discussion on the legal matters. So there won't be anything afterwards on this, on a planning... No, actually, I'm... Can you send me those?